Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our Thursday, April 10, 2025, public hearing of the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee. We have two resolutions on the agenda today, House resolution and a Senate resolution. Our first resolution is a House resolution, Dr. Tricia M. Bailey of Orlando, Florida, to be a member of the Board of Trustees for the University of Connecticut. You can come forward, please, and take a seat. Good morning. Good morning. And and good morning, if you could just, as customary, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear, promise, or affirm to tell the truth, hold truths, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you so much. And if you have an opening statement, feel free to to read it or summarize or whatever you'd like to do.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Conception and Duff, Vice Chairs Godfrey and Looney, ranking members Yakari and Bertel, and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Dr. Tricia Bailey and it is a privilege to be here with you today. The University of Connecticut is an outstanding institution of higher education, is a dynamic place where education and innovation combine and thrive, producing the leaders and workforce of tomorrow, a vital research that positively impacts countless lives and helps drive Connecticut's economy. UConn is woven within the fabric of Connecticut. As a proud alumna of UConn, class of 1999, and a nominee of the Board of Trustees, I come before you truly honored. As an entrepreneur, philanthropist, and dedicated servant leader, this opportunity represents more than just a role, is a chance to apply my experience in the resilience, purpose-driven leadership, and business success to make a lasting impact on both the university and the broader community. I am the founder and CEO of Bailey's Medical Equipment and Supplies and Bailey's Pharmacy, a company dedicated to compassion and care to the elderly and disabled. Under my leadership, my flagship company has flourished, expanded to multiple locations, serving countless individuals in need. Beyond this enterprise, I oversee sixteen successful companies collectively employing over five thousand people and generating revenues in hundreds of millions. In 2008, my life took an unexpected life-altering turn. After falling into an eight-day coma, I awoke to severe physical damage and a long road to recovery. That tragedy forever changed my perspective, ultimately leading me to discover my true purpose. In that moment of vulnerability, I came to understand the power of perseverance, faith, and intentionality. Emerging from that experience was a renewed sense of direction. I embraced my calling as a leader, mentor, and advocate. Now, with over two decades of experience in the medical industry, various entrepreneurial ventures, I am committed to strengthening the foundation of my network while empowering those around me to achieve success in their own endeavors. Along with my purpose and passion for helping others, my primary focus areas in leadership and mentorship center around developing individuals striving for excellence in both their personal and professional lives. Personal growth, discovering your purpose, business development, the mastery of leadership, offering a full scope of understanding of the art and science behind effective, purpose-driven leadership. I also mentor individuals how to market themselves, their business, and their products, regardless of any obstacles they may face. Beyond my business success, my true passion lies in giving back. I've had the immense honor of making significant contributions to my alma mater, University of Connecticut, supporting its athletic program, helping hundreds of students gain access to higher education through scholarships. I currently serve as a member of UConn Foundation Board of Directors, where I remain committed to further opportunities for future generations. My career has been defined by breaking barriers. I am recognized as as one of the wealthiest Jamaican-born women and the first Black woman to have a building named in their honor at the University of Connecticut. These achievements, however, are not just personal milestones, they are symbols of what is possible when ambition meets purpose and success is used to uplift others. What makes me uniquely qualified for a role as a member of the University of Connecticut's Board of Trustees is that as a proud alumna, successful entrepreneur, and dedicated philanthropist, I bring a unique blend of business experience, leadership, and a deep commitment to education. As a CEO of multiple companies employing over five thousand people, I understand strategic growth, financial sustainability, and organizational leadership. Key skills are aligned with the university's mission. My significant contributions to UConn athletics and student scholarships reflect my passion for empowering future generations. Additionally, I am committed to fostering diversity, inclusion, and excellence. My experience in mentorship, business development, and community impacts made me uniquely positioned to help shape UConn's future on the Board of Trustees. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share my story and insights with you today. I look forward to answering your questions and engage in meaningful dialogue about how we can continue fostering growth, opportunity, and excellence at University of Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony and your really wonderful story and really highlights a lot as to why our flagship university is is great and public education is a wonderful thing that gives people many opportunities and a good launching pad for success in the future. Before we get into some questions, I know you have you traveled this morning and you have some family here and just wondering if you want to take a moment to recognize them, especially maybe the person right behind you.
I do. So I have my wonderful, lovely mom who gave me her face, Gloria Thomason, sitting right behind me, and my seven children, Gabriel Bailey, Natalia, Akita, Jason, Kayla, Ocean, and Kishina, were sitting there. Lots of children, as you can tell, there's always something in my home.
I'm sure. Well, thank you and welcome again, everybody. Thanks for making the trip this morning up here to Connecticut. It's probably the weather's a little different today than than down in Florida. And this is your this is your first appointment to the UConn Board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you been serving on the board yet?
I have not.
Oh, you've not not gone to any.
On the Board of Foundation Board, I have been serving for the last two years on the Board of Trustees, I have not been serving.
Okay, great. And what, from your standpoint and through your impressive resume and business acumen, one of the one of the things that's great about UConn is its success, but it's also been a limitation in some ways because of the fact that there's so many people, especially in the state of Connecticut, who want to go. And my two kids are, one graduated college, one's in college now, and work in that universe of parents who see have a lot of children who are applying and looking at UConn, but there's just so much demand now and there's not enough supply in some ways. What do you see as some of the challenges or things that you want to bring to UConn based on your experiences, your business acumen, and and what you've seen maybe through the foundation?
One of the major areas in which I believe that will enhance our admission numbers is housing, student housing. And one of my specialties happens to be real estate development. And I believe working with the community, with developers, as well as working with the or with the board, to be able to figure out additional student housing will enable us to accept more students into the into the university. And that will be able to enhance not only the amount of dollars that the organization make, but also it'll be able to give us give more children the opportunity to experience such an amazing place to thrive and to build their careers.
Right. How do we how do we get more housing? What do we do?
More housing, it can several ways, possible ways. And this is something that obviously I would have to dive a little bit deeper into once I'm on the board. We can create more off-campus housing. We can either limit housing to, obviously, disabled and first-year students on campus housing, work with other developers in the community to be able to create additional housing or rehab some of the current facilities to add additional spaces in the dorm room. Those are just some of the simplified ways. And once I'm a part of the board, I'll be able to dive more into the into solving some of those challenges.
Fair enough. And last question for you that I have at the moment is, UConn is probably is, I would consider probably a midsize university. It's it's big, but not too big. It's a little Goldilocks in there in a way. But again, with the the man of our own students here in Connecticut, we have UConn Stanford, Waterbury Campus, Hartford Campus, down southeast Connecticut as well. But most, a lot of folks, now Stanford is probably the fastest-growing piece of UConn, but there's a lot of folks, students want to go to the main campus, especially now that we have another championship and they see all the excitement, right? Go UConn, go Huskies. We see all the excitement there at the main campus. It's really juicy. Outside of housing, do you envision more growth at the university? For, you know, growing to maybe in some ways, some of the sizes of other universities and other parts of the country that are a little bit larger than what we what we're used to here in Connecticut?
As we press forward, especially in the athletic program and the academic program for greater excellence, we're going to continue to have, when there's the best deserve the best. So the best students across the country, across the world, wants to be a part of the best organization, which is the University of Connecticut. I believe that the first step that we must take, however, in order to be able to afford those children to be able to be accepted into the University of Connecticut at the stores campus, is to first look at the housing. Because if they're coming to classes, they come into university, we have to be able to know that they actually have housing. And housing is, I think, is a vital component. Off-campus housing and on-campus housing is a vital component in order to grow the university, to make it not just a midsize, but a larger university. And again, as I dive into more of the details and integrity of what is what are what are the difficulties and challenges that take place once I'm on the board, I'll be able to give a significantly better directive and strategic approach in order to grow the university to a larger scale.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that because there's, we know there's a little bit of controversy right now because of, after the first year, the students are not guaranteed housing right now. And that's been, we've heard that as legislators, because our constituents call us about that. So definitely the need for more housing. It's and it's not that UConn is in the middle of a metropolitan city and there's some other, there's housing down the road or around the corner. It's it's a little different when you're there versus if you were in the middle of a city. But I know housing is being built and I appreciate the vision on that. I just want to say thank you for for giving back and for your your role in the foundation, your role on the board. I think it's going to be very, very important and appreciate your voice in that as well. And it's and it's such a pleasure to see success from UConn, come back and give. And it just shows what a special place it is, especially the university is, and why we must, as the legislature, support our flagship university. So hopefully, everybody will be at the parade on Sunday for our Lady Huskies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Duff. Dr. Bailey, congratulations on your nomination and thank you for everything you've already done for the university and will continue to do as Chairman Duff mentioned. It's great to see kind of success stories coming back and giving back to the to the university. Go Huskies, a class of oh four. So seeing, again, your success story has been has been really enlightening and it's it's great to see. So congratulations on that. Just going back to the housing portion, so I represent downtown Hartford who had that has the downtown or the UConn Hartford campus here. And we've recently opened or will be opening up some dorms here for for student housing. And with the lack of housing up in stores, how can we better promote our satellite campuses as a true destination, right? So as Chairman Duff, everyone wants to go to stores, but, you know, there's there's not that many opportunities when it comes to the housing, but we have some great satellite campuses throughout the state of Connecticut. So how do we better promote those as options as well?
I think highlighting the benefits and the significant impact of when you do graduate with a University of Connecticut degree, I am, I can, as you can testify to, the amazingness of having UConn behind you on that paper, is, I believe, promoting the the efficiency, the careers in which that UConn graduates end up having, and the success level of being at University of Connecticut, along with promoting the the qualities that can draw a student to Avery Campus or Hartford or Stanford. I believe that if we are promoting those, we're more likely not will have a greater acceptance level in those universities on those specific campuses versus them directing towards stores.
That's great. And kind of piggybacking off that, you know, one of the things we struggle a little bit with is really retaining students after they graduate to stay here in the state of Connecticut and call Connecticut home. What can the board do, working with us, obviously, to really make it easier, an easier option for students after they graduate to really call Connecticut home?
So I was one of those people who left Connecticut and could not wait to leave. So I know exactly how. You have to promote your success stories. The students who, and this is the best thing that I did for myself, was stay in Connecticut after I left University of Connecticut. I stayed for my first career and into the second career as well. Promote your successes, what that looks like. There's no other place that you can go where an employer is going to make sure that you get an interview just because you graduated from a university other than Connecticut. If you go to Florida or Arizona or any of those other states, you're just another person with a degree. When you're in, when you are in Connecticut, that makes a significant difference when you graduate, especially in my case, I was a student athlete. So doors opened for me that would have never opened. And I believe that if we promote our success stories of the people who have stayed in Connecticut, we will yield a significant change with the retention in staying in Connecticut. Because once you know you're in your amazing career, usually you're not leaving that state because you, you know, success breeds success.
That's a great point. Thanks for for that. Speaking of being a former student athlete, I do have to ask you about your thoughts on NIL. You know, it's obviously a changing landscape here for for student athletes. Just curious on your thoughts on the merits of the program and, you know, what you see in the future of NIL?
So I am not an expert in NIL. However, I do believe that it is, it's a good thing that their students are able to come, student athletes are able to be compensated while on campus. And while I'm not an expert in that area, I unfortunately, I can't dive too much into it because I don't, I don't know all the facts in order to do so.
That's fair enough. And then, so I'm done with my questions, but my my daughter would kill me if I didn't mention that she loved your book. She read it, I think, last month. So just thank you for that as well, for not just not touching the lives of university students, but kids of all ages. So congratulations again.
Thank you. Tell her thank you for her support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Yacarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Bailey, for being here and flying up from Florida. So do you reside currently in Florida?
I'm currently in Florida, yes.
And the Board of Trustees, how long have you have you been on any at any meetings? These Zoom?
So I have been, I've been on the Foundation Board on Zoom, some Zoom meetings. And my intention is to buy a house here so that I'm here on in Connecticut more often now.
Really?
Yes.
Got bless. In the summer?
I'll be, I know, I know, having the kids come up for this, no, also sounds really good because they don't get that in Florida.
I appreciate you stepping up. And I had got a text, but people are a little concerned, but via Zoom, I'm on a board locally. I try to make all the meetings, I can't make them, but if I don't, I want to be a Zoom. Obviously, you've been to the campus recently.
Yes.
My youngest son graduated from there and it's changed so much in the last 20 years, besides the need and want. But what I found when my son applied years ago, 20 years ago, majority of the students were from Connecticut. Now it seems it's flipped. Is that is that accurate? Or it's not accurate? It's about what's the ratio?
I don't know the ratio of the out-of-state versus in-state students. And so unfortunately, I will not be able to answer that.
Oh, it is. I get so many complaints, and maybe it's because their children didn't get in, that my kids didn't get in, they picked somebody from out of state, and I don't really have an answer except for I, you know, I really check with Ms. Scarborough. But obviously, it's a touted school, not just for athletics, but I'm co-chair of the Bioscience of Connecticut in the Science Department. I've visited the Science Department. And I think it's a growing, it's one of the most important industries in the world because of healthcare, of disease, pandemics. And I think, you know, UConn is stepping up. I would love to see the L University and work closely with UConn with all our business, private businesses. And you're a doctor, so maybe you could help with that if you want to expand on that, what we should be doing potentially.
So, you know, the admissions, I think that is just fear to students, regardless of whether they're in-state or out-of-state, to that the best students are accepted into the into the University of Connecticut. Now, I will dive a little bit more once I'm on the board into this issue to see where we can make some adjustments and how to fearly adjust, adjust in in the making sure that it is fear amongst all ages and all all groups. So at this time, that's this is much information that I have to be.
I appreciate that. It was probably unfair, but I just was curious and I could speak to the R or or G L about it further. Being a former student athlete, and UConn is such a great school for athletics, and with the NIL, I think they took in $67 million last year. Are you, I'm a little concerned in some ways because you don't want it to become all about money, but the school could use the money and you want to help the athletes. Are you concerned or any advice maybe for for us or for the student athletes or UConn itself? I think you could be like a pivotal role in this.
So I don't think that is concerning. I think it's actually very good.
Okay.
That athletics is bringing in money because I'm, I'm sure at some point we will start redirecting some research, as research funds are being cut federally. I believe that having a strong athletic program brings in not just athletes, it brings the scientists, it brings in the medical students, it brings in business programs and 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 the endeavors. And because people are naturally, most people are drawn to athletes and drawn to athletics. And a program that shows excellence, not only athletics, but in the classroom, it is a powerhouse. And our goal should always be to bring in as much money into the university so that we can help students, we can extend scholarships and grants and so forth to other kids who are are excellent, however, who cannot afford to be there at the university. So I don't see it as a bad thing. I think that it's it's a very good thing. And, you know, once I I get on the board, I'll be able to understand the dynamics and the the dynamics of really the scope of what's truly happening now and be able to provide a better opinion and directive.
No, I appreciate that. I don't, I probably should have rephrased it. I'm not worried about the money going to the schools and to the programs. It just, it seems like a lot of student athletes are transferring, I think, potentially because of money. And in some cases, it might benefit UConn because they're such a great athletic school, and a good public, good education, academic school. So as long as you, your answer really is the right answer, I think, because I think that we could use those dollars for science and education or scholarship, people of need, and potentially even housing. There's a lot of land in that area, just just not a lot of housing.
So the developers will be have a field day, which is great.
What may, I'm just one last question, Mr. Chair. And I think it's wonderful you want to step up. What made you want to step up? Were you asked or you just you saw?
I was asked, but that this is a dream, a dream come true. Being able to be able to be an influencer for the university that that pretty much made me who I am. Because if UConn didn't have given my scholarship, I wouldn't be the success that I am because I wouldn't be able to go to college. And being able to be a part, knowing what it looks like to be an inner-city kid who didn't have resources, to be at such a successful university and succeeded, and the support that I received there, it gives me a broader, broader highlight to be able to see from students who have resources and students who do not have resources. Being a student there and now being an alumni, this is a true honor to be able to be a part of such an amazing university as I have been since 1995.
I appreciate you stepping up and giving back. It sounds like you're giving a lot back to to our country and our university and probably more places than I can imagine.
Yeah.
But thank you. And obviously, your parents, plus they did a great job. So you're probably doing a great job with your children. So thank you so much for stepping up. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Representative Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Congratulations. Welcome, welcome back. On a side note, I was born and raised in Orlando, Florida, so I totally find that you're down there and and living the life down there and sometimes the better way than we have up here sometimes. But so welcome coming back. And I do love the idea that you're coming back and you're going to be putting a couple roots down back here again, as someone who, you know, I think there is an advantageous to be here, you know, at least closer to the university when doing a role like this. So I do appreciate it. You talked in your opening statement, but also a little bit afterwards about the athletic program. And I think that's a great selling tool for the university, right? We see them on TV, we see them doing well, especially in basketball, even football, they've had, you know, a couple bowl games recently. So the idea that the athletic program is a driver.
So the idea that the athletic program is a driver in terms of getting the attention to the school. And ultimately now, the school has to deal with that attention, right? Because they're going to have more people applying and how to deal with it. And you got, you talked recently about the housing, which I do agree is, is a major piece that needs to get done. But one of my, one of my issues with, with, with UConn and the athletic program is, is a lack of a, a real conference that they're in, right? So, because all this, ultimately that does is it generates money, right? The conference helps you generate money in terms of TV deals and other things. Currently, UConn and the, I think the last three years has lost, you know, about 110, 120 million rounding. It's like 50 million, 30 million and 30 million over the last three years, their athletic program has lost. Partly because they don't have that, that, that conference that they're tied to, that they can get that revenue. I know you said about NIL, you're not a, you know, an expert yet on that, but I'm just curious your thoughts on, as a businesswoman, as a successful businesswoman, like how, when you're running a deficit like that, how to try to make up that deficit? Because ultimately that deficit is coming from somewhere and it's coming from the taxpayers, potentially in, in state of Connecticut. Just want to understand like how, what's your view and what's your look at of how to, how UConn can use the athletic program in a positive, which it has, but also ultimately make it as a closer to a general route, at least neutral, if not try to make some dollars off of that.
I will work with David to, to figure out the, the conferences and, and figure out what, what is happening and why we're losing the recent money that we are currently losing. I think once I get on the board, because I'm not completely knowledgeable of all these circumstances, I'll be able to, I will be able to answer that question and be able to give better strategic directives than I can right now.
I appreciate that. I'm on the Housing Committee too. I'm a ranking member on the Housing Committee. So I, my ears perked up when you're talking about housing because I think, I don't think anyone disagrees that, especially with the news recently of not being able to guarantee four years of housing at UConn, that they need more housing. I think a lot of it's going to come from outside, right? I don't think UConn can do it all themselves. They can add some dorms, but I, I went to Penn State University and we only guaranteed two years of housing on, on campus and everything else is done outside. And again, Happy Valley State College, Pennsylvania, it's the middle of nowhere, right? There's nothing else there besides the university. But they know that when you build it, people come. So if you build, build those apartment buildings, people will take them. So my question to you as someone who's in the real estate, you know, in, down in Florida is, is how, how can we incentivize? What can we do maybe as a legislature that could help maybe incentivize people to come in and want to build those apartment buildings that are closer to the campus? To hopefully give that room so that UConn can grow. Because you're right, UConn can grow and it's popular. And the fact that we can get housing, we build it, people will come. So how, how would your, what's your thought process on that in terms of incentivizing folks to come in and try to build around the campus on land around there?
I, I believe that the land, if, if University of Connecticut were to mirror a developer with the land, purchasing of the land, that, that process, obviously a qualified developer, someone who actually can go vertical very quickly. I think that will make a significant change in how much housing is built around, around campus. So I think land grants or some funding in partnership with the developer is, can go very, very far away because you, you'll start seeing things and more people don't know about it. Because matter of fact, I only recently, as I'm studying for this interview, realized that we are short in housing because if I knew that four years ago, we probably had significantly more housing.
Yeah. 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 You can turn that, I mean, that's a great thing is with the effort and with, it could be turned around fairly quickly. It's not a 10, 20-year process. It could be turned around pretty quick with the right investments and the right support from legislature maybe to help them, but also to get the right investors in there to, to build those, those units. So hopefully that can help. Hopefully you can come in and kickstart that and get it going. I'm sure that UConn in general will love it. I think the state of Connecticut would love it. So best of luck. Congratulations for coming in and look forward to working with you down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Purcell.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Bailey, thank you for.
Hold on one second. Dr. Bailey, he'll be right on your screen if the screen is on. Yes. Proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Dr. Bailey, thank you for being before us today. I'm sorry that I couldn't be in the room with you. I had a commitment back in my legislative district that required me to be here. But I really don't have any, any additional questions except for one. But I just want to make a couple of comments first before I ask my question. And I'm just so overwhelmed by your, your humility this morning in wanting to give back to, as you said, the university that, that kind of launched your ability to be successful. You know, regardless of where anyone goes to school, that's a pretty profound statement to make about, about your experience at the University of Connecticut. And you were taught, I guess, probably the way I was and many other people, that to be able to give back in, in such a terrific way and a profound way to something that has helped you really to guide your life is, is really a very special thing. So I thank you for, for acknowledging and accepting the opportunity to be on the Board of Trustees for the university. And I look forward with great anticipation to how you will apply all of your life experiences and your successes to the continued success of the university. And that leads me to kind of a really big, not really a loaded question, but a big question. And you, you spoke a moment ago about being, you know, preparing to be before us today and you've got your family there. I wish I was there to meet your family and your, and your, your beautiful mother. But what do you see, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the University of Connecticut going forward? And before you answer that, I know you've already answered questions regarding a housing crisis on campus. Representative Scott just spoke about his concerns regarding the, the, this tremendous athletic program, which, you know, when I travel to the parts of the country for my responsibilities outside of the legislature, all people want to talk about is, of course, is UConn basketball, right? And, and whatnot. But what is in your vision, and you are a visionary, what is the biggest obstacle, the biggest challenge for the University of Connecticut? I would say in the immediate future, what, what has to be addressed first?
I believe that the student housing is to be addressed first. I believe that with student housing, with more student housing, you have more acceptance. You have more money coming to university. You have more money to be able to apply to other areas that you can, you were not able to do so prior. And I believe that the in-states, in-state students will be less tattered if they're, because the acceptance rates will be higher when you have more, more housing. So I think, I think the big, it seemed like based on my limit, my research. And again, I have to be able to have the full picture, be able to give you a true, true strategic answer. But I believe student housing seemed to be, based on my research, the biggest challenge that we were, we're currently facing. And the limitations of not being able to accept a significantly more students than we, we have accepted so far.
Okay, thank you. And, and I would, not that, that I need to necessarily agree or disagree, but I, I agree with that. Listening to my colleagues ask questions prior to that. And I guess the biggest challenge, and this will be in part for you as a, as a future member of the Board of Trustees. And for those of us sitting in the room and in the legislature is going to be overcoming the cost of doing that because we know that more housing means more buildings, which means significant expense. Building things today is very expensive. So that'll be a good challenge, I, I suppose, for us to take on. You know, if we, if we all agree that the, you know, the continued growth and success of the university is an important part of the fabric of what makes, makes Connecticut so great. So, so again, thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't be there to see you in person. I look forward to supporting your nomination today. Good luck in your, your new role on the Board of Trustees. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Any other questions for members of the committee? Seeing no other questions, we just ask one final question of everybody. Oh, and by the way, before I do that, I just want to say that if you're looking for a place in Connecticut, there's this lovely community down by the coastline, about 90,000 people. It's a little far from UConn stores, but close to UConn Stanford. You might want to consider it. Lovely, lovely community. Sorry.
I think I was still, I was told about that one earlier.
What's that?
I was told about that one earlier.
Norwalk, yeah. Sixth largest city. We're hoping to make it the fifth largest city maybe one day. Yeah. Anyway, the question that we ask everybody, is there anything in your past that might prove to be embarrassing to the governor, the legislature, this committee or anybody else?
No, there is not.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it and look forward to voting. House members vote on your resolution because it's only a House resolution. But I think there's universal support between House members and senators. So thank you again for, for being here today.
And thank you so much for having me.
Of course. Thank you. Okay, next is Ellen Katz, Esquire of West Hartford, to be chairperson of the Connecticut Siting Council.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Good, good morning still.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning. Unless you're in Atlantic time.
That's right.
Actually, though, I think Atlantic is this time too. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to wear a firm, tell the truth, hold truth, and not the truth?
I do.
All right. Do you have an opening statement?
I do. And first of all, congratulations to Dr. Bailey, incredible person. Go UConn. My son's a graduate. But thank you and good morning. Chairman Duff and Concepcion, Vice Chairs Godfrey and Looney, ranking members Yakarino and Purcell and other distinguished members of the Executive Nominations Committee. My name is Ellen Katz and I thank you for considering my nomination to be Chair of the Siting Council. I've been a member of the Siting Council since the fall. And I've also served in other leadership roles in Connecticut, including eight years as Connecticut's Consumer Council, the public advocate on energy, natural gas, water and telecommunications from 2011 to 2019. And I was honored to work with many of you and other members of the legislature during my time as OCC. And it would be an honor to be confirmed as Chair of the Siting Council today. I've also served as the inaugural Director of the Office of Public Participation at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, which was FERC's first new office in 20 years, which was charged with coordinating assistance to the public with respect to FERC proceedings. I helped build a utilities practice at Tilson Technology Management, serving as Vice President of Utilities there. And I also served as a consumer protection specialist at the U.S. Department of Energy on their $8.8 billion Home Rebates Program. A program that helps, provides money to the states to help lower energy costs and increase efficiency in American homes. And I helped build that program from the ground up as well. So this position feels like an opportunity to bring together my years of service and experience as an environmental and energy attorney, a public servant and a consumer advocate. I'm really very excited to be focused again on Connecticut, my home state, after some years in Washington. In my career, I've striven to bring transparency to government programs, to help educate the program, the public on how to participate in government processes and to help develop public policies that balance the needs of the general public with the impacts on individual citizens. As Consumer Council, I led efforts to clarify energy bills, to protect consumers from excess energy costs while supporting sources of clean, sustainable energy and to bring affordable, high-speed broadband and wireless service every corner of the state. I've worked with many of you here and in the legislature on those initiatives. And I believe my ability to listen and to consider other perspectives and to build consensus on issues that help our citizens will also be valuable if I'm confirmed as Chairman of the Siting Council. I'm proud of Connecticut and the many interesting innovative things we do here. And I, I like to talk about my home state. I'm honored that I've had many opportunities to do so. Good morning. As Consumer Council, as Director of the Office of Public Participation and as President of the National Association of State Utility Consumer Advocates, a role in which I served when I was Consumer Council. And I've been a frequent speaker and commentator for national and regional conferences, webinars and journals. And I see public education and outreach as an essential part of public service. And I would hope as Chair that I would continue to work on public education. On a personal note, I have lived in West Hartford for almost 30 years with my husband. And we raised our two sons there. I'm a graduate of Cornell University, Boston University School of Law, and I hold a master's in English from Trinity College. So I thank the governor for the confidence he has placed in me and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. And Ellen, Attorney Katz, we're on a first-time basis, I think, for many years. We appreciate and congratulations on your nomination to be Chair of the Siting Council. It's not a job that many people would, would ask for or accept or want or even understand because it is a, it is not an easy one. And I can say that my years is on the Energy Committee, dealing with this, just understanding the Siting Council and being a representative of, in Norwalk, of the state, in the state legislature, tussling with the Siting Council over years on undergrounding or high-power tension lines or towers or whatever. It's, it's, it's not easy to be a member of the Siting Council because you do have to balance a lot of needs. And there's the, what's needed to ensure a good grid, what's needed to ensure that ratepayers aren't on a hook for something that is unnecessary reliability, but also ensure that you are following the law as well. When you, when the Siting Council has their hearings, are they a lot like PURA or Department of Insurance hearings for when they do rate cases? Are they viewed as almost judicial in a way?
Yes, yes. We have ex parte rules. We are viewed as, the council members are decision makers. And so it is sort of a, it's a, it's an administrative hearing and we serve as the judges, for lack of a better word.
Right, right. So that, because a lot of times there's frustration when you hear neighbors who say, well, it should be this way or that way, but the law says or the regulations say. And is it, do you, do you deal with, obviously state laws, but are also federal laws in play as well?
Federal laws are kind of more in the background because we deal with, particularly on transmission projects, the local state laws and the state regulations. And certainly a lot of the infrastructure that comes before us is impacted by federal law, but we are empowered under state law. So that's what our main focus is.
Okay. And from a standpoint of your, one of the, again, years ago, and it, sometimes it depends on who the chair is. My first iteration, when I became, when I was in the House with the Siting Council was not a pleasant one. And then the chair changed and it, it became much more pleasant because the, the body itself was more willing to listen to the public and still work within the boundaries of the law. And that, so we had, for us in Norwalk, we had high tension power lines that came through, 345 KV volts above ground. Phase two was underground, even though the utility company said it wasn't technically possible to do. Somehow it still happened and the lights are on. But the Siting Council was very good about listening to residents and coming up with a solution that still achieved the goal, but at the same time adhered to what we're, what we were trying to do locally. How do you balance that? And how do you ensure that the public's voice is heard? And that people feel like they have been given a fair chance, even if sometimes you're not able to, be able to kind of rule exactly as they would like you to make a decision?
Well, first of all, thank you for that question. And at some point, we'll have a cup of coffee and I hope you tell me what's unpleasant, what was unpleasant about the prior iterations. But I believe that one of the reasons that the Siting Council might be sometimes referred to as the, the council people love to hate, is that they don't necessarily understand the work we do. As you said, it's fairly complex. And members of the public don't necessarily understand how it works. But I think the Siting Council makes great efforts to accommodate members of the public. And listen, my whole career, including in Connecticut, has been about making government more accessible and transparent to the citizens. People do not trust what they don't understand and what they can't see. So I think it's incumbent on me as a public servant to make sure that people are aware and understand what we're doing and how we make our decisions. And so with that in mind, we do provide notices to the community. We provide notices to the towns, as you know, we provide notice to abutters, we do newspaper notices. It's always hard in this day and age to figure out how to reach people because people don't open their mail and people don't read the newspaper. So, you know. how to reach people because people don't open their mail and people don't read the newspaper. So, you know, I will be looking at other other things we can do to get notices out to the public. But folks are members of the public are welcome and encouraged to participate in our public hearing sessions. They are fully remote, and I have wondered, but after having talking to some of you, particularly Representative Godfrey, about how your constituents feel about virtual hearings, I'm told they really like it because they don't have to get a babysitter. They don't have to go out at night. It's very convenient. They can come and speak and leave. So I think there's a real value in that. But we also tell people and encourage them to submit written comments. They carry the same weight as appearing in showing up and speaking at a hearing, which a lot of people find uncomfortable or don't have time to do. So I hope that there's a lot of opportunities, and I think we will continue to educate people on those opportunities.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that because it is a lot of times, as we have a society that is that needs more power, that wants to be connected, the decisions you have to make are not easy ones, and we have to work within those parameters. I will say that your role as Office of Consumer Council and as the Ratepayers Advocate, because that's what the Office of Consumer Council is, does, I think, set you in a good position to be the Chair of the Siting Council because it does provide that opportunity or that experience that you've had to be able to to understand how to listen to the average resident. You're not there. You have to do a job in the Siting Council, but your role in Consumer Council was to really represent those who didn't have a voice, but to provide an office of the state to go fight for them and to to make sure that they were heard. And I thought you did that job very well as OCC.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you stepping up to this. Again, I think it's it's not an easy job. So hopefully, it's not one of which we you run away from screaming mad. But 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 we do appreciate it. It is difficult, and I thank you for taking on this challenge because I think that I think some of these things are harder now, and especially with social media, because it's easier for people to stir up something to say be against it when they may not know the benefits. And maybe it's a legitimately bad thing, but when you're kind of starting out from it, people are mad without first having that chance to educate the public. It makes it more difficult. And I think in some ways, that's probably your greatest challenge right now is to be able to find those balances and hopefully educate the public a little bit on on what's what's needed, what's necessary, and how we could make it better for them. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Duff. Congratulations. Thank you again. The chairman said, thank you for stepping up for our, I guess, for the benefit of some of us and maybe just the general public. Can you just give a high-level overview of exactly what the Siting Council does, what the mission is? I didn't know what the what the Siting Council was until I got here in the Legislature here in 2018, and I believe it was established in the 70s. So so again, just for the general public, can you just briefly just give an overview of exactly what the responsibilities are?
Sure. It's a nine-member council appointed by the Governor's Office and members of the Legislature that is charged with approving basically energy infrastructure projects, upgrades, energy facilities, certain telecom infrastructure such as sighting towers and 5G located on certain places, transmission lines, pipelines, new generation facilities. And then also, when in that bucket is things like battery storage facilities of a certain size, solar, those kinds of renewable infrastructure projects. So when you think Siting Council, primarily think infrastructure and infrastructure upgrades, including substation upgrades by UI and ever-source.
Great. And, you know, before coming into the meeting today, you know, just did a quick Google of news of, you know, what the what some of the work you guys have been doing. There was an article, I think it was late last year, that said that the denial rate was about 3% over the last five years. Is that normal? You know, is that on par with other states?
I candidly do not know the answer to the question of what other states' rates are. I think that the 3% denial rate reflects the fact that there's an it is a small staff. It's a in addition to the council, it is an executive director and a total staff of nine. But there is an incredible amount of work that goes into working with the applicant to make sure that the application meets the requirements of the statute. So it's the statute. So it's not a situation where it comes before us and we voted up or down. If it did, the denial rate would probably be much higher, but we strive to work with the applicants as we are sort of obligated to do under the regulatory framework to address concerns that we hear from the community that we personally have, that the staff have. So I think that's reflected in the ultimate outcome. I think we ultimately tend to get really good product in the end. It doesn't mean that everything is perfect and appropriate, which is why, you know, you do see projects being rejected. I personally voted against a project in the last couple of months. So but it's a council of nine. Currently, we have eight. And I think generally, you generally see consensus votes, which means I think that the staff, the applicant, and the community are doing a good job about bringing concerns forward and having them addressed.
Appreciate that. And my last question, and you kind of answered this already. You know, how does a council balance the the needs for more, obviously, energy infrastructure versus, you know, protecting Connecticut's landscapes and beauty and all that that stuff?
I mean, that's ultimately the hardest part of this job, and frankly, it's probably one of the hardest parts of your job, right? Everybody wants reliable electricity. Everybody wants ubiquitous Wi-Fi coverage. But a lot of times, people don't want to look at a tower or see a battery storage facility or and have legitimate concerns about farmland being gobbled up by solar facilities. So I think we have to be guided by the statutes and make reasoned judgments as to when might the impacts of a project be negative for reasons. We we have the authority all the way to scenic values. In other words, you're going to build something in a really unsightly place. We have the ability to ask you to move it or reject it. But I think ultimately, it comes down to public safety, and that is our highest order, is making sure that what we are approving is safe and reliable and affordable. But then we also do layer on the impact on the community. Does that answer your question?
It certainly does. Thank you so much. Again, congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Hicarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to meet you, Ms. Katz. We were supposed to meet yesterday. Hopefully, everything's okay.
Yes, thank you.
I only have a couple of questions and, you know, and I represent North Haven, and there was right now between the utility companies or the telecommunications company, the Siting Council, they've been at this point, working with the residents that were concerned. Some residents want a cell tower, and there is a need because in that area of town, there's really poor cell service. And I don't usually engage, and I did not engage on social media, but people were really going attacking the family that the cell tower is going to go on, but most people need that service. So we work, we're trying to work it out where it's low, the tower's still put in, but maybe a sixteenth of a mile away. When you, when you, I guess my point is, these situations, they must come up fairly often, and you you actually go out and you physically look at people or engineers go out and look at the site and work with the local governments and residents?
It's a it's a it's a great question, and I can tell you with telecommunications infrastructure, 10 years ago, there was a lot more, I don't want to look at that thing, and now it's a lot more, please, please put up a tower because I really need better cell service. But again, you have that, what I would call more local concerns about, I don't want to look at it. I don't like where you are. And so we do have staff. We generally don't go out and do site visits. Staff can do site visits if it's necessary, but we do, we do have the ability and do requests from the applicant that we have a, you know, a full panoply of pictures and descriptions and site plans so we can make sure that it's appropriate for the location. And we are actually, I think, very responsive to concerns raised by the town, by the local residents about, you know, this is really unsightly. And and if you look at our decisions, we're, I think, very good about making sure there's adequate screening, moving it if it's can be moved away from, you know, so many yards away from the scenic road or the farmhouse or whomever. We don't have the ability to engage directly with the local community, myself as a member, because we have ex parte rules. But we do allow and encourage submission of public comments, all of which are very much taken into consideration. And I just think you have to look at our record of making those kinds of adjustments to accommodate legitimate local concerns, including, I don't want to look at it, but I know I need it.
No, I appreciate that. It sounds like you look at the the findings either between the local planning zoning, the utility companies that are telecommunications that want this, and then the pros and cons. We had a there's a public hearing in town on the subject, and it was they took the they took the information to heart, and they're actually making it, I believe, making adjustments. I don't have a lot of questions because I I know it's an important role, but I did I do appreciate that you would mention pristine land. I'm against, I'm not against solar, but I'm against it on pristine land, and unfortunately, I think we made a mistake in our state. You know, farmers are struggling in some cases, and if somebody dangles a lot of money in front of them, either to rent a property or to buy it, it's hard for them to refuse it. I would love in the future to any of these solar projects be built on, you know, land that can't not land, but asphalt or projects that are need to be remediated, but just put the solar there. Do you have any role in that or just work to Consumer Council and deep on that or?
Well, certainly, we are encouraged and are encouraged by to see solar panels put on. For example, I think we have an application before us with respect to a landfill. Brownfield sites, I think, are, you know, very appropriate. It's a very appropriate use of that. And and you know, this problem of or the the challenge of taking farmland and making it for solar, it's a it's a problem around the country for the reasons you say. Farmers tend to be struggling. My grandfather was a dairy farmer and the Catskills, and I know how hard it is to make a living as a small farmer. So you have an opportunity to make some good money to support your other things. It's it's tempting, but on the other hand, we hate to see prime farmland. There had, we have been really innovative about allowing for sheep grazing and grazing underneath solar panels. So it's not like we're completely, and in sometime, in some cases, there's actually some crops that can be grown around and even under, as I understand it. I'm not an expert in this area yet. Give me, give me six months. I'll be able to give you a fuller answer. But I don't think it's an all or nothing. Unfortunately, we're a small, crowded state. It's not like you go to Indiana and they have swathes of undeveloped land, and there's solar everywhere. We have to make do.
No, thoughtful answer, and I appreciate it. Now, I wish we had spoke earlier. You seem like a really, obviously, smart and pleasant person and a great grasp of the need of responsible citing for solar, solar, whatever. I didn't tell the communication.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry I did not get to meet you. I'm happy to talk with you any other time.
You've been around for a while, though.
I have been.
And you've done a good job, I think.
I'm going to put that in the best possible way.
I appreciate, we can't vote for you, but I appreciate you being here and stepping up again. I appreciate the time to the two chairs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Representative Haynes. She has had her hand up since the beginning. And then Representative Godfrey, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry I'm not there today in person, but I did have a question. And first, let me say congratulations to Ms. Katz. I appreciate all the work that you've done on the Siting Council as of right now and appreciate your up for nomination again. The quick question is, is I'm also a first-electman where I currently sit, and I, we're going through a Siting Council issue. We've got a solar tower going up, and we have legislation before us this session to allow for a local representation on the Siting Council. And I, my understanding is this legislation will put them on the Siting Council temporarily while a particular petition is is going through. Just looking for your thoughts on that idea as to whether or not that it's a good thing or a bad thing. Understandably, the Connecticut Siting Council was set up because of local representation can sometimes be enthusiastic. And needless to say, there still needs to be those connections, whether it's a cell tower, whether it's battery, whether it's whatever it is that, you know, the installation is going to be. But just curious as to what your thoughts are on that legislation that's before us.
First of all, thank you for the question. I won't comment on the pending application, obviously. But I do think that I'll just talk about the process, the current process now, which is that I think that there is frankly, ample opportunity for municipal participation. We take the comments very seriously. We allow them to appear before us. From a legal perspective, it would, as an attorney, I'm just thinking through the possible conflict of someone being a municipal representative. At the same time, they're making a decision on an application with respect to their community. It can be a tricky position to put someone in. But I will say, I think we do a good job of addressing and encouraging municipal participation before the Siting Council as a party, which I think is a good position to be in. Having said that, we are an adjudicatory body and not an advocacy body, unlike my former positions. So I think it's probably inappropriate for me to comment beyond that on the positives or negatives, any particular piece of legislation at this time.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you answering that, and I understand the legal ramifications of of that. I'm not sure, and maybe I got to go back and read it as well. I'm not sure that it talks about somebody who's sitting in a municipal seat to be on it. It just talks about local representation. But I absolutely agree with you, and I will say this, as I'm, as we are going through a particular one, and maybe we'll go through more, my hope is that we do. The the Siting Council has been diligent as far as asking the community to come to the hearing, and they put up a sign, and, you know, so they are doing what you are saying that you guys do. And I appreciate the work that you do do to get these things moving, and understandably, it's it's kind of a tough spot. But congratulations, and thank you very much for your your time today with us.
Thank you very much, Representative.
Thank you, Representative Godfrey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations. Good to see you. Welcome back to Connecticut. We're very happy about that, too.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your remarks about how technology has allowed more people to be involved in the public hearing process. We certainly find that to be true here. You don't have to come to Hartford. I'm from Danbury, as you know. You don't have to come to Hartford and spend a whole day waiting for your three-minute turn to be called. You can sit in the comfort of your home and and have an idea, a window. So I'm assuming that is kind of the kind of activity that the council has when it does its public hearing.
Yes, similar to that.
But you also mentioned, rightly so, that people are not always informed about what the consequences are, what the what the proposal is, what the science behind things are. I've had people who have opposed antenna because they're worried about the way the electric waves. So when you have a public hearing, if someone would mention something along those lines in opposition, is it, is the applicant part of the public hearing and can answer those questions? Does the council members who are present try and inform? Who does that job?
Well, it's it's kind of like a legislative hearing. There is primarily presentation of of a public hearing. The public presents testimony. The council does not try to engage with them. We're in our listening mode, I would say. But the applicant is certainly free later or on the record to respond if they feel like there's something that needs to be addressed. Your example of EMF electromagnetic frequencies where people have concerns about that, that's something we would address if that's raised, or if we have a concern about it, we would discuss it in our decision. So hopefully, people would, if they don't agree, they would recognize that we heard them, and we have looked at the science, and here's where we come out.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'd like to call on the fabulous ranking member of this committee, Senator Burthel, who I skipped over accidentally and apologized for tremendously. We've agreed to swap offices over the next two weeks since I feel so badly about it, but he has some wonderful questions, and I apologize again for skipping over him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. They're measuring the curtains now, just so you know.
But Attorney Katz, so nice to see you. I'm sorry, again, you heard my comments with Dr. Bailey. I'm sorry I couldn't be in the room today. I have commitments back here in, in my district. But I just, I, I think I have maybe one question for you. I did want to publicly extend my gratitude for the meeting with you a couple of weeks ago in my office. You essentially, I, I think, answered all of the same questions then that have been asked of you today. And I, your background, as you explained it to me, and your resume, of course, are very impressive. And I think that you are a fantastic appointee for chairing the Siting Council. I, too, as Representative Concepcion mentioned in his comments, I really, I thought I knew what the Siting Council did. And after spending an hour or so discussing this role with you, I had a much clearer and important understanding. I also appreciate that you, you took a moment to explain to us how the Siting Council interacts with local zoning, planning and zoning, because I think that's important, that there, there is no inappropriate discretion that's given, that you are charged with as public servants and as part of a, part of the legal process here as being a bit of a mini state-level zoning operation, which some people, or, or office, not operation, but some people find that very offensive in some ways, and others perhaps look at it with a cleaner viewpoint or a different lens and say that maybe you really should have that level of impartiality, not necessarily opinions, but, but certainly impartiality. And, you know, I happen to represent one of the towns in Connecticut that does not have any zoning, local zoning regulations. That's the little town of Bethlehem. And that is sometimes wrought with some really weird things that happen in that beautiful little town. So, including the placement of things like cellular towers and, you know, high tension wires. So, so I guess I really don't have a question and I don't want to belabor this. I promised the, the chair I wouldn't go more than, you know, an hour or two. I'm kidding. But I just wanted to say thank you. I look forward to supporting your nomination today. Thank you for, for all of what you've done in your prior roles as well. I think you'll be a great chair of this very important part of our government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for taking the time to meet with me earlier.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, and you look fabulous today, I have to say.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Representative Gresko.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, we're circling back to Representative Haynes's question and the municipal participation. Heard your answer, but wondering if the fact that if it was a non-voting member of the, of the municipality would make any difference?
Um, I think that we're open to whatever the legislature thinks is appropriate. Again, I think that, as you've heard me say, I think local voices and local perspective are incredibly important. I'm just not candidly sure it's necessary. So I'd be wondering, I always ask what, what we would be trying to achieve. So I, I don't want to ask you the question, but I would be curious to see what additional perspective that would bring, given that we are, I think, so conscious of the municipal voice and the public participation by members of the local communities before us.
I, I think the, I think the governor would agree with you. Aaron, good, good seeing you again. Congratulations. And I think the term is agro-voltaics with the merging of the new technology with agriculture and having solar panels seems to be the direction that is going. So again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from members of the committee? Any other questions from members of the committee? Okay, if not the, the last question, is there anything near past that proved embarrassing to the governor, legislature of this committee?
No, sir.
Or anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, thank you. That concludes our public hearing. Mr. Clerk, let me know when we are switched over to our committee apparatus and we can convene that.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
We will convene this meeting of the Executive and Legislative Nominations Committee for Thursday, April 10, 2025. Any remarks by my co-chair? Seeing none. Okay. And on the resolutions, we have a House resolution, Senate resolution. So obviously, we need a House member to nominate, or, yeah, and then a Senate to nominate that individual as well. So on the House resolution, is there a nomination for, or a movement, I'm sorry, motion, not nomination, move, motion to move Dr. Tricia M. Bailey of Orlando, Florida to be a member of the Board of Trustees of the University of Connecticut? It's been moved by the chair. It's been seconded by Representative Godfrey. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Concepcion?
Yes.
Godfrey?
Yes.
Jacarino?
Yeah.
Bazino? Gresko?
Gresko votes yes.
Haynes?
Haynes votes yes.
Linehan? Nuccio? Quinn?
Yes.
Ruttigliano? Sanchez?
Sanchez votes yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Okay, and we will keep the votes open till four o'clock today, for members. Next is a Senate resolution. Ellen Katz, Esquire, West Hartford, to be Chair President of Siting Council. I move that.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second of Senator Burtell. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seeing none. Before members leave, I just wanted to, just real quick, if you can hang in here just for a second, Mr. Clerk, could you just call the senators, please?
Yes. Duff?
Yes.
Looney? Burtell?
Senator Burtell votes yes.
Bonferra? Harding? Hartley? Kushner? Martin? And Winfield?
All right. Thank you. And we'll keep that vote open till four. This looks like our last committee meeting of this session unless something else comes up. But I want to take a moment to thank a few folks for, for their help. And just want to make sure I, I have everybody here. We have Dean O'Brien, our clerk of the committee. Thank you, Dean, for, for your work. Liz Aizhert, thank you, Liz. And it's your birthday today. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to Liz. So we appreciate you spending your time with us. And we also want to thank our good folks from OLR. Steph Dambros is not here, but we have McKay Smorgowitz. Did I get that correctly? Pretty good? I practiced. Thank you for, for your work. We have LCO. We have Shannon McCarthy from LCO. So thank you. Appreciate your being here always. And we also have Rich Novak, Novak from CTN, who's in here as well. Thank you, Rich. And Tom Scanlon from the Governor's Office. Appreciate what you do as well. Thank you to the committee members. Thanks to my co-chair, who does a great job chairing most of the meetings. Really appreciate him always stepping up and helping out. So we will be in recess till four o'clock today. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good job yesterday, too.
Good job.
Here's you.
I'll see you around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Liz. Bye. Thanks, Liz. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I know, but you know what I got up there. I did the packing bugs. I wanted to get it along. Yeah.
Thank you.
...
Good afternoon.
Hey, Representative, how are you?
Good, how are you? I'd like to vote please.
Of course. One resolution for you which is resolution confirming the nomination of Tricia Bailey of Orlando Florida. Being Member of the Board of Trustees for the University of Connecticut.
I am voting no please.
Okay, very good.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hey Senator, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Very well, thanks. All right, one resolution for you. This is the resolution to confirm the nomination of Ellen Katz of West Hartford to be chairperson of the Connecticut Siting Council.
Uh, I vote yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Thank you.
Hey Senator.
Hey Dean.
How are you?
I'm well.
Good, uh one resolution for you.
Okay.
One confirming the nomination of Ellen Katz of West Hartford be chairperson of the Connecticut Siting Council.
I'm assuming everybody said yes?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright thanks Dean, have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Hey Senator.
Hey Senator.
Hi, how are you?
Good, I think this is probably the first vote we've ever recorded.
Sorry?
This is the first vote I think we've ever recorded at altitude, so this is cool.
Yeah.
Considering.
And thank you, thank you for your note. Your text.
Of course, so um one resolution for senators today, resolution confirming the nomination of Ellen Katz of West Hartford to be chairperson of the Connecticut Siting Council.
Senator Kushner votes yes.
Great, thank you very much and safe travels.
Thank you Dean.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Representative, how are you?
I'm good, Dean. How are you doing?
All right, so for House members, we just have one today. It's a House Republican confirming the nomination of Trisha Bailey of Orlando, Florida. We remember the Board of Trustees for the University of Connecticut.
Uh, can I ask, um, did you get any no votes on that?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, one?
Yes.
Are you allowed to tell me who?
No, this vote is not closed.
Oh, I find this so interesting because she's not from Connecticut. So that makes me, I don't know if I like that.
Yeah.
Um, and she's still living in, uh, Florida?
She had, so.
However.
Yeah, I got a cool one, yeah.
Right, from U two in ninety-nine.
You know, so there's files for.
Can you answer a question for me? Does she have to move to Connecticut in order to hold this?
I don't know, honestly.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do Representative Lanninghan votes no.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
You too, bye.